Of the council, always a pleasure. Town staff, good to see everybody. Members of public that are here, thank you so much for coming. This is a special council meeting for a grant application. And as a result of it being a special meeting, we get extra points. And anytime I hear extra points, I get very, very nervous, I gotta tell you. But Emily assures me that as a result of the extra points, it's not going to cost the town any more money and there is no matches. So with that being said, let's call this special meeting to order. And Russell, will you call roll please?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Breckus?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Before we get started, I'd like a motion from council to excuse councilmember Jablonsky.
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Jablonsky.
Second.
Motion is second. Just call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. We all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emily, the floor is all yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily McCord and I am the town's grant writer. And as the mayor alluded, this is a sole purpose meeting. I'm here to talk to you about a specific --
You can take it out and hold it.
When are we gonna fix that?
So. Thank you, Bob. Like I was saying, it's a sole purpose meeting. It's a state grant opportunity. The town has been successful this in the past. We currently have two open grants to develop the Calusa Corners Park, two $50,000 grants. And we're gonna be starting on that next year. In the meantime, staff is recommending to council to submit a grant application to Firdapp. It would be a $50,000 grant with no match for, to help build one of the ball fields at the Country Estates Park. This would include the clearing and earthwork. And December would be purchasing some bases and things like that. It's not a diamond, it's not anything like that. It would be, you know, a recreational field for soccer, for cricket, for, you know, different kinds of sports. I have made a presentation to the Parks Board and they did recommend this. I also made presentations to the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association and the Country Estates Homeowners Association. Do you have any questions?
Just one quickly, Emily. This is part of the commitments from years and years and years ago.
Yes, sir. The ball fields are in the management plan.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Approve. Any members of public wish to comment on this grant?
As chair, yes. We did have it presented to us Tuesday night and we supported 110 percent. We'd like to really get that park finished, although it was brought up. One of the members of Country Estates wanted to know about the ring. And we told them that it was there. In fact, we, Emily went and got the most current plans for it, gave it to the young lady, and she's gonna take it back to her HOA. If they want to do a fundraiser for it or anything like that, they can do anything they want, but right now, we don't have the funds for it. They do have a trail, they just don't have the riding ring. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Any other members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We do have a motion is second for approval. For the record, would you read the resolution, please, Russell?
A resolution of the town council of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the town administrator to submit a Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grant to the state of Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into any necessary agreements and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Again, we've got a motion is second. Approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. That concludes the special meeting, and I'm sure it's unanimous to adjourn.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Russell. I'm sorry.
May I have a minute just to shut down and restart?
Oh, my goodness, yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Breckus?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. We all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started, Noel is a big Dolphin fan. He reminded me that the Dolphins were playing tonight. And the start of the game is eight o'clock. That's Noel. I'm just passing along the, I'm just passing that information along to you guys.
You have a goal.
That's right. And then to Freddie, thank you for the wonderful job that you did while I was away. Appreciate it very, very much.
You're welcome.
They came accustomed to you and the outstanding job that you did, and you got it done in such a quick hurry. I'm gonna do my best to try and mimic what you accomplished, Freddie, during my absence. And thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay. Item number three, Russell?
Mayor?
And before, of course, Keith isn't here. We miss and love Keith dearly, but we're in very capable hands. Richard, it's a pleasure always to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we, for councilmember Jablonsky, go ahead and excuse him as well for this meeting. I'll make that motion.
Oh, for the regular meeting as well, okay. Thank you very much. Motion is second to excuse the absence of councilmember Jablonsky. And thank you, Steve, for reminding me. You call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, we miss you, Gary. Item number three, public comment. We have four speakers tonight. The first speaker, Mike Hanley.
Just one. All I wanna do is say the tree on the corner of 205 and Griffin Road on the western side is gone. But thank you, and thank you, and whoever's responsible, hooray, keep up the good Lord.
Thank you, Mike.
... out there and see instead of getting teepoed by the owner of the road.
Amen.
We need to try to get that microphone working so that we can record all the conversation. Pretty pleased. Thank you, December.
He's bringing you a replacement.
Who's the next speaker?
And Gay, you're gonna be our next speaker?
The TV needs the mic.
Gay Chapels, I've been accused of using more than three minutes, so I'm gonna make this short and sweet. I would like the council to give direction to our town clerk to do some investigation and find out, there was a law made back when Ann Kove was on the county commission along with Howard Foreman. And the two of them drew up a proposition really to save the open spaces. And what it was, and I don't know how it was worded, but I can give you a condensed version. I remember if you sign five years that you would not build on the remaining open space on your property. In other words, you had your house, and you had your barn, and then you had pasture, you had a big yard, or whatever. If you signed that, then your land was not taxed, that land that you left open. It's never been removed. Nobody used it because we had ag exemption. That was one reason why I didn't use it. I had ag exemption. But if you're aware, we are losing our ag exemption at a frightening pace. And it's not because they're not being used for ag. They are. But the county, for whatever reason, it appears that everybody is losing it. There have been cattle on Griffin Road since I can remember, and it's been ag exempt. They were denied this year. There's never been cattle removed from that property. It's 50 acres and it belongs to the church. What this does is it forces these people, and I'm not talking about the church, although I heard through the grapevine that they're gonna sell a part of it. It forces everybody to look at what they're doing and their taxes and so on and so forth. And then you see them start hacking it up and separating it and winding up with one acre homesites instead of two and a half or five. The other thing is that if you talk to our planner, they have had a rush on people coming in there that have bought the larger pieces, wanting to put apartments, zero lot lines, and don't understand why they can't. So it's in the wind, and we need to do something, and we need to do it quick. Or we're gonna wind up zero lot line, and everybody's gonna bail, and the new ones coming in are not gonna wanna keep. The pavement stops there. They're gonna want streetlights, they're gonna want city water, they're gonna want sewage, and they're gonna wanna be like everybody else. So if you'll give direction for him to research it, he can probably do it a lot faster than I can. And I will tell you, I did talk to Howard Foreman, but he's been at the state level, and now he's in the tax office, and this happened a long, long time ago, and he couldn't remember. But Ann Kove passed away, and I think it'll be a lot easier. I think she was in office for four to six years. I'm not sure. But it was done during that timeframe when Howard Foreman was there. See, I made it.
Vince Filletta?
Good evening, Vince Filletta, 14120 Luray Road. It has come to our attention that one of our property's residents is utilizing the property for marshaling construction equipment. And this is a residential area. It's on Old Sheridan Street. It has about 20, not 20, about 10 to 15 trucks on it being marshaled there for use during the day. And it is a nuisance to some of the residents because of the traffic that it has coming out of Old Sheridan Street. I brought it to the attention of our councilman, and I believe that it is an illegal use because it is a residential area. I called code enforcement today, but they didn't respond to it yet. So I was bringing it to your attention that that marshaling area should be removed because it is a residential area. Thank you.
Vince, just to let you know, I spoke to Robert today, and he's on it.
You spoke to who?
Code enforcement.
Noel Hollingsworth?
Good evening, Noel Hollingsworth. When I make a mistake, I apologize for it. And last meeting, and I believe it should be done the way it was done, and it was done on TV, so I'll apologize on TV. During the Tisdor debate, I sort of tore all of you a new orifice because I believe that you were doing something incorrect. I went back and looked at my notes, and I was incorrect. Doesn't happen very often, but it did.
It's a historical moment.
And so therefore, I would like to apologize to the council in total for my actions on that evening and what I said. And I am deeply sorry, but I will correct my mistake in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakers. All right, that concludes public comment. Item number four, board reports. Any board members here have some good information? Gay, you always have good information.
Just to bring you up to speed, if you don't have it in notes from the town administrator, you all had sent to us the renaming, or the naming of the trail after the young lady that was killed. We discussed it at great length and felt that we already had in place memorials for individuals, and they would be either chairs. I think you can probably get it. It's a list. I don't know if December has it or whether or not the art board does. But we had done that so that we wouldn't get into, you know, streets and trails and buildings and so on. So it's either, they can do artwork if they want, and, you know, we'll put it in the park somewhere. But the town isn't obligated to pay for it. This would be either by some group or individual that's donating it in that individual's name that they want it to be remembered by. So that's where we stand on that. We also, and I'm sure you remember, we've had a lot of people from this town, young people and just recently several adults. And we just didn't feel that we wanted to get into that. We would rather just stay with what the boards and the council had initially started with, which was artwork, you know, benches, trees, et cetera. The other thing that we discussed was, and we voted on it, was the sound system in the, or the sound in the building, the barn out there.
Yeah.
And what we did was we made a motion to bring forward to you as soon as we can get a price of doing long-
Sound debate.
-fabric-covered, sound-resistant. Nick said it works in her place. She couldn't even hear herself think, and that's what her and her husband did. So she's gonna come up with a price, and then we'll bring it forward. And we'd like to, if it's not too expensive, we'd like to be able to do that to eliminate that it's really loud in there. And I understand that, there was one other thing, but I'm old and I forget everything. So hopefully, the town administrator, anything else we voted on and moved forward to you people, he'll remind you of. Thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Any other board reports? Item number four, board report is concluded. Item number five, council member comments.
Steve? Thank you, Mayor. I just, Noel, thank you. That was great. Sincerely, I appreciate, not many folks would do that, so I appreciate you doing that. That'd be great. And a couple other things, just, I know we're working on the FPNL property over there on 190th, so I just wanted to mention that. Sounds like we're going back and forth on price. Andy, I don't know if you're gonna give an update on that, but maybe give an overview on that. I'd appreciate it just to bring everybody up to speed, just so that we know we're still working on that. That's all part of completing that roadway and potentially the grant for the gate there. The other item I wanted to touch on was guardrails out on Griffin Road. I really appreciate everybody on the council. I think everybody's approaching it from a different standpoint, which is excellent. I mean, I don't mean that in a negative way, I mean that in a positive way. Whichever way we can get the funding and the efforts, you know, put together to get those guardrails up there, I just, great, great, yeah. So I wanted to mention that. I know I've been in touch with Broward County as recently as today. I got an email back from them trying to find out where they are as far as having all the information they need to move forward, and they still have a few things. I'm pretty frustrated, actually, Andy, about getting some of the medical information that has to do with the two accidents that are out there. They're still waiting for some of that. That just, you know, obviously, we want all that to be done right, but it seems a little crazy to me that we still don't have that information to them on that. So if we can move that along in any way, we can. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Just, Andy gave all of us a overview of the volunteer fire department stuff or whatever, and I just wanted to clarify on one parcel of that. The Brightwing site out west, Broadwing site, excuse me, is, I think we're all in favor of moving forward as far as getting it platted so we're able to do something with it at a later date in time. But I don't think we, we're looking at other options other than placing it at that location. I just wanted to clarify that that site is, that's kind of the avenue we're headed, that everybody's kind of on board with that. That's, I mean, without it being platted, we can't trade it, we can't do anything with it, we can't sell it, we can't. So I believe or thought that we're all in favor of moving forward on that parcel, just to plait it, but not to spend any other money in clearing it or doing anything, because we're looking at other options for other locations and possibly doing what we might do with the volunteer fire department. So I just wanna leave that at that spot.
I agree with you. Yeah, I think we all agree with that. And before, before doing that, though, and going forward with it, just a confirmation that the process, the plating process, what it's gonna cost the towns, just so we know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just so we know. I agree. You're absolutely right. It's useless right now with them.
Yeah, yeah. It's so, not that we're moving in any other direction right now, but just as far as the plating on that site, because it's useless to anybody if we wanted to do something with it. So we haven't made our mind up on anything else, we haven't discussed the other options. But I just wanted to get that particular one put to bed.
Good thought. Thank you, Doug. Freddie?
Yeah, I don't have a lot other than what Doug was talking about. I think we got another option there. I was trying to get, bring it forward more, and I didn't get a chance to talk to those people. But that church right there on 193rd, I think it is where the-
192nd, I think.
It's actually-
Yeah, it's right behind the church where Country Estate meets.
The gentleman owns that church is very helpful in a lot of ways. I think we ought to maybe have somebody contact him and see if he might be willing to donate or sell us a small piece of it. They have quite a bit of storefrontage right there.
I asked them to get me a survey. I was at the Country Estates meeting last week, and they're gonna, supposed to be getting me a survey of how much, what the lot size is and how the access would happen and all that. So until we get that, we can't even really talk about it, but absolutely on board with it.
I think that would be an ideal place for it. And from the past of what this gentleman has done and his stuff, that he might be receptive. But I think we may ought to have a meeting with him, with town administrator, and-
Steve, you had a comment on-
Just a quick comment. I've also spoken to them about that. I think the key is going to be the access there, depending on where, initially, I know when I spoke to them, they were talking about the lot that was behind the church, which would create, you know, and they were talking about access through the church parking lot, which probably is not gonna be viable. So it'd be a matter of access, or if there's another corner there, they'd be interested in working.
I'm not even talking, I'm talking about on Griffin Road. He has quite a bit of property on Griffin Road.
Right.
And we may be, even if he gave us over in the northeast corner there, right there, would be an ideal place for it.
Good idea, Freddie.
Mayor, one other thing I forgot to mention.
Sure, go ahead.
The education advisory board had asked me if we had a problem, if they wanted to expand. They're five now. I don't know if they want to go to seven or to nine, but I told them that we've never denied them in the past, but it had to stay an odd number. So I just wanted to bring that forward to you all. I don't think you'd object to that board expanding in any way.
No. Bring that forward the next council meeting, Andy. I'm sure that we won't have any issues with that. Glad to hear that there's more than interested in serving. The more the merrier. Okay. Couple of things, agenda item coming up here very shortly about well-publicized potential oil drilling, exploration, whatever you want to call it. But real quickly, the mayor of Miramar is putting together a meeting, invited all mayors. I also want to throw it out there to you all. It's next Tuesday at 6:30 at Miramar City Hall. So if you can make it, we'd love to, love to see you and listen to what everybody has to say. Because it is a resolution that's coming up, I'll continue on with some of the other, not really thoughts, it's just kind of a reality check with regards to the status of things out there. Sure, Freddie.
I did call her today, make, told her I'd be interested. What you need to do on that thing, they said to call this lady if you're interested in coming. From what she tells me, she gonna put us in a different group, I guess, whatever it is. It might be a good idea to call-
I'm sitting with my group. I'm sitting with my-
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Steve, as you said, the status of the guardrails out west. A dear friend of mine is a vice chair of the South Florida Water Management District, just a wonderful guy, and we've been communicating back and forth, and he's working hard. One of the issues initially that we've overcome is a confirmation that it is indeed South Florida Water Management District right of way. That was an issue, because if it wasn't, that wasn't something that they would fund. Got a confirmation today in a phone call that that indeed is right of way, so that's a very, very good thing. The second thing that he confirmed with me, it is something that they do, it is something they expend, they expend funds for. So that's two good things. And I will tell you, there's active communication between South Florida Water Management District and Broward County with regards to collaboration and coming up with a plan moving forward to install guardrails out there. Just based upon my conversation with him, and I know he's got staff working on it. In fact, I was hopeful that maybe by this afternoon, he could give me an update, but unfortunately, he didn't get back to me this afternoon. But in the next three, four, or five days, cautiously optimistic that we're gonna get some feedback about a plan to install guardrails, hopefully in those sections. But I will tell you, it's very active, a lot of conversation going on. And again, to confirm, South Florida Water Management District does install guardrails. And the one big issue was it being in their right of way. We confirmed that that indeed is the case. He did the research. He sent that to his staff people. But I can tell you that he's working very, very hard on our behalf, recognizing what happened out there and doing whatever he can to get funding from South Florida Water Management District and collaboration with Broward County to get that addressed out there in the very near future. He's a wonderful, wonderful guy. Kevin Powers, I don't know if you've heard him, but he's just a great guy, and is acting on our behalf, moving this forward.
If I could jump in with you just a second, Mayor, on that. Not that specifically, but after the news we got in the last 30 days about that school moving forward out west.
Yeah.
I think that raises that elevation-
Absolutely.
-just that much higher and that much faster. And on the second part of that is that any action or anything else we can do to put a roadblock up on that school issue to go up, unless that road is widened westbound to 27, would be crazy to me. So I don't know what action we need to take, or wait till Keith gets back, whatever, unless Richard has an update. But I think the town needs to absolutely throw any roadblocks we can in the meantime in the way that school, until we can get something else done there, whether it's the guardrails handled or the road widening.
And I, and I'm not sure if it's roadblocks, but I hear what you're saying, but we want to, you know, exactly. We want to make sure that, we'll make sure. I mean, obviously, we filed a lawsuit to prevent it from happening because there were things that we felt were important, zoning component, and then also the traffic count component out there. But, you know, ultimately, we ended up withdrawing the lawsuit because the only other mechanism they ruled against us, and the other mechanism was an appeal, and that wasn't something we wanted to go forward with. But you're absolutely right. If this is something that's going to come to fruition out there, a couple things. One, we need to inform the residents, because I will tell you that I've been in touch with some residents out west, and they had asked, please, let us know if this school is gonna be constructed out here, because I can tell you that I'm leaving. You know, it's gonna ruin this area out, out, out west. And I can tell you that it's been several of the residents out west. So I think that, you know, based upon the most recent information that- you know, based upon the most recent information that we have, that Pembroke Pines obviously consummated that, that deal, and as a result of us dropping that lawsuit, I would be shocked and surprised if we don't have something in the very near future with regards to construction of this charter school, anticipating, I think, in their minds, that they'll be open, opening for the next school year. So, we're talking about one year from today. And I agree with you, Doug, that those are significant concerns that do need to be addressed, you know, out, out there. And you're talking about a STEM school with 2,600 students out there, and it is a significant, a significant impact. And, you know, you wonder sometimes what the motivation is, because you have some pretty damn good schools out, out west, one in particular that's, that's under enroll, and who knows what effect or impact that's going to have on West Broward. And I suspect it will leave some of the overcrowding issues at Cypress Bay High School, although I've put our school up against anybody, and I suspect it will retain most of our, most of our students. But that's a, a good, a good idea. And I can't, even with the traffic counts at those particular times of day, in the morning and the afternoon, significant out there. So, maybe go back and reassess those to find out what those numbers are, evaluate those, and maybe that's some mechanism. But I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I think all of us do, that unfortunately, you know, we fought it, we're absolutely opposed to it. It's a bad location. I think there has to, there's a little bit to do with retribution from the other side.
I'm sure.
Because it just doesn't make sense, but it is, it is what it is, and we'll deal with it as, as the construction of that school evolves. All right, with that being said, that concludes item number five. Item number six, legal comments.
No comments right now, Mayor. Thanks. Appreciate everybody being here.
Thank you.
And Keith will be back in a saddle on Monday, and we'll round back up and then follow up with y'all if there's any...
Great, Richard. Thank you. I'm sure you have a lot to tell us when he gets back. Item number, concludes item number six. Item number seven, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One is, certainly, the comments have been made by council as, as far as our progress on the guardrails out west. Just a couple of other things. As Mr. Hanley noted, the tree has been removed. We're working with the county on the additional speed limit signs to be placed out there, as well as that two-lane, four-lane, two-lane area that's in the vicinity of 202. County has been out, they've surveyed it, they've indicated that, that it needs more signage, you know, lane ends ahead signage. We're letting them go through that process and put that signage in place. We expect that to be in place very shortly. I, I don't know, as I, as I sit here now, that that's going to solve the problem. I think the people who are maybe abusing that recognize that the lane ends, and that's why they're in a hurry to get around and, and pass perhaps unsafely. So, we're going to let the county go ahead with the signage improvements that they're making there. We're going to continue to monitor it and evaluate it, and we will stay on them for further enhancements, should they be needed and as they're needed. Just a reminder, our next council meeting is two weeks from tonight on the 27th. On Tuesday of that week, the 25th, we have our budget workshop scheduled for 7:00 PM. That's obviously open to the public, a little bit less formal presentation than this evening, but we'll go through the budget with you that evening. So, I just want to remind you all that we have that, that scheduled on, on the 25th. And last but not least, Council Member Bright Cruz asked me to give you an overview on the FPNL property out on 190. And you may recall, when we, when we received our grant to finish the paving on 190, we had an issue with the FPL property that's there. So, we went to FPNL, we had requested an easement from them so that we would be able to work with them. We received, I say, a great deal of pushback. There were multiple departments within FPNL that was evaluating it. The process was going painfully slow. The town attorney then kind of changed directions and went back to FPNL and said, well, how about you sell it to us if we buy it from you? FPNL said, yeah, we can do that. So, they said, go ahead and get an appraisal. We did. We had an appraisal done. We submitted that to FPNL. They've come back to us and countered that appraisal at a higher price. They're, it's, it's not terrible. We, our appraisal was about $8,500. They're looking for about $24,000, just in, certainly round numbers for the sake of this discussion. So, we're, we're currently working on that and trying to get that to a more reasonable number. It's certainly not property that's valuable for anything else, but FPNL being able to sell it to us would, would remove the liability concerns that they had with that roadway going in there. So, we are in the process of negotiating that with them. I, I hope to bring that to a close fairly soon and get that on either next council agenda or the first meeting in, in September. But we are continuing to work on it. And that's all I have for you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Need to get those two appraisers together to reconcile that significant difference, that's for sure. That concludes item number seven. Item number eight, Russell?
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending the town of Southwest Ranches code of ordinances by creating Chapter 24, Article 4, entitled Parking, Stopping, and Standing Enforcement to Comply with Current State Laws, including those applicable to parking spaces for disabled persons, and to create procedures so as to delegate authority for enforcement and collection of parking violation fines to the Office of the Broward County, Florida Clerk of the Court for the 17th Judicial Circuit, authorizing the use of hearing officers in the system established by Broward County for such purpose, providing for inclusion in the town code, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is first reading on this ordinance, should council approve it. And while we have a limited commercial presence in town, our commercial presence does include the use of handicap parking spaces. Currently, we are very limited in our ability to ticket people who abuse those parking spaces. Right now, it can be done according to state statute, but what the situation, the way the statute calls for is the ticket has to go to the driver, not the registered owner of the car. So, if one of our officers is, is driving through the Lowe's parking lot, spots a car in a handicap space that does not have a handicap sticker, the placard, or handicap license plate, in order to write a ticket on that car, he would have to sit there and wait for the driver to come out, verify that the driver is not handicapped, and then he could issue the ticket. This is, for us, I'd say for all intents and purposes, kind of a glitch, and this ordinance would fix that. This would allow our officers to write a ticket to the car or the owner of the car, so if they see a violation, they would be able to ticket the car. It's under the terms of state statute, models the same Davey, Davey ordinance and parking fees. And should council approve it tonight, it'll be back for a second reading. Along with that, on second reading, under separate resolution, we would ask you to approve it in, in agreement with the Broward County Clerk of Courts, who handles and processes this. So, payments would be made at the Clerk of Courts. They would process it, keep a, a minimal, and it is a minimal fee, and send the balance of the fee to the town. If someone, for example, is handicapped and neglected to put up their placard, they would be, they would have the process. They'd be able to let the Clerk of Courts know. Clerk of Courts would have the ability to then void that citation. I don't know if you have any additional questions. I know Captain Engel is here from, from Davey Police as well, should you have any additional questions, but I think that sums it up.
Yeah, it's pretty much self-explanatory. Good to see you, Captain Engel. Always a pleasure. Again, we have a motion to second to approve. Any members of the public have any comments on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion to second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number nine.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to AC Schultz's, Inc., doing business as Jaffa Well Drilling for $38,013 for the installation, testing, and repair of fire protection water wells, authorizing the town administrator to execute the firewall repair proposals, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve. Any additional information, Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is a contract with Jaffa Well Drilling. We have a, an existing agreement with Jaffa Well Drilling. We had gone out to bid on this last year. Council approved that contract, and it was awarded to Jaffa. What we have now is with Davey Fire Marshal goes out and checks our fire wells annually and gives us a report on which fire wells, either new fire wells that need to be put in, or fire wells that are in need of service. We've got that list here. Chief Bennett has worked with, with Davey as well to prioritize those wells so that we can get started on some of that well maintenance that needs to be done. If you go through the, the memo on this, I'll say that it perhaps is a little bit confusing. I'll tell you that there's only one new well that's in here. That's over by New Hope Church, over by South Broward Drainage District, over on Dykes Road. Everything else is well maintenance. One of the problems, one of the challenges we have is when we have a, a dry well, or well we need maintenance on, Jaffa gives us a proposal, they have to, at that point, give us what amounts to a not-to-exceed. Typically, we'll get, we'll get an estimate from them that comes in around $9,000, which is their worst-case scenario to bring that well back up to speed. Typically, once they start to work on it, it turns out to be much less than what they got to cover themselves by providing that, that initial quote to us. And typically, that 9,000 is, is about a third of that, is about $3,000. So, we're, it's, it's a little bit difficult to work, but we have, we do have an ongoing working relationship with them. They've, they've, you know, responded very well to us. This is here for council consideration. Even though we have a contract with them, the amount we're asking you to spend does exceed my, my authority. And so, what we were going to do is just kind of go in order, as, as the chief has, has ranked those wells that need to be done. We'll work through it for the balance of this fiscal year, get as many as we can done, and then just continue into the next fiscal year. I know Sandy has worked very hard on this, and I know Marty has assisted. So, if you have additional questions, I know Chief Bennett is also here.
Thank you, Andy. The issue's been identified. There are some problematic wells out there that have to be fixed, and that's delineated in the, in the backup. Again, we have a motion to second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion to second to approve. Steve?
Yeah, Andy, just a follow-up question on that. So, if these, let's, let's say it comes in at half, they bid 9,000, let's say on average, it comes in at 4,500. So, half the money is not spent in that situation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do we, you know, we're getting towards the end of the fiscal year, but would we normally go back out and do a couple more wells, two or three more wells, to use that money? Or does that money roll over? Or does that money go into reserves? What, what happens with that?
A couple of different options. One is, certainly, we want to get as far down that list as we possibly can during the current fiscal year.
Right.
That would absolutely be our intention. Now, should we have money left in that kitty when we get to September 30th? There are two options. One, if it's unspent, it could typically go back to reserves, you know, we would go into reserves, and we'd have a new budget line going forward that we would continue to work out of. However, we can encumber some of those funds, based on the work that we need to have done, and roll that over.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to, you know, based on what you said, we could have two-thirds of this money left over. If it's 9,000 is bidding, and then they come in at 3,000, you know, we could have two-thirds of the money left over. It would be good, I think, to just, you know, continue. I mean, I appreciate the fact that they're not charging us $9,000 a well, you know, so, let's, let's, but let's go ahead and use that money towards its intended purpose. That's what I would like to do.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember, that would be our intent, is to just keep plowing through this list.
I'll support the suggestion or idea, basically, just to continue with what else needs to be done with whatever money's left over related to the well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Again, we got a motion to second to approve. Russell, call the question.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, opposing the oil drilling permit applications submitted by Cantor Real Estate LLC, a Florida for-profit limited liability corporation, to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, seeking oil drilling rights on property located in the Florida Everglades, approximately six miles west of the city of Miramar's westernmost boundaries, and supporting efforts opposing extreme well stimulation, hydraulic fracturing, acid fracturing, and, and any form of extreme well stimulation for purposes of resource extraction in the Florida Everglades, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Again, this is one that I asked that it be on the agenda for your consideration. It is something that is very well published, and, and the media isn't, I mean, it's in the newspaper, it's out there in the media as, as well. As you all are aware, there's somebody that filed for, not filed for a permit, requested a permit to do some oil drilling. I think it's one, one, one well. And I will tell you that there is a crescendo of opposition amongst the municipalities, the county. And I'm sure that you've read the articles with regards to the zoning out there and the potential, wouldn't be able to engage in this kind of activity, activity because of what this area is currently zoned without the approval of the county commission. All the feedback that we get is that they're in opposition to that, although there have been three or four that have asked for additional information. Again, I can't see anything positive right now in light of the environment that exists out there, in light of the overabundance of, of supplies, and the potential that, you know, adverse negative impact that this could have on South Florida's water supplies. So, I ask that you, you would support this. Freddie?
Yeah, I want to back that 100%. I think, you know, there's a lot of money spent around this state trying to protect somewhere, and we got one of the best jewels in the world, the Everglades. And anybody that would support this thing is just, would be out of this world. I mean, I think, I'm 100% with you. I think it should be, Mike, you got my support.
Thank you, Freddie. I mean, neither Everglades, but, you know, the aquifer, you know, where we get our water from.
Yeah, the Biscayne Aquifer. Yeah, absolutely have the support, without a doubt.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, and absolutely, I just ditto what they said. You know, the Everglades is, it's the only place in the world that's like that, so, we need to be protected.
Unique, absolutely. We need to protect it. I agree. Well, thank you all. I appreciate that very much.
You need a motion?
I do. I need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. You made it, you seconded.
So, Steve, you made the motion, and Freddie seconded. Thank you very much. Any members of public wish to comment?
Freddie made it, and Steve seconded.
Okay, Freddie made it, and Steve seconded. Any members of public wish to comment on this item? Bob?
Yeah, I've been following this for probably six months now, before it became very public knowledge. You know, friendly with a lot of nature photographers, and this has been a subject of discussion for quite a while. This is pure politics at play right now. Apparently, the Cantors want to establish a baseline value for that property. There is oil out there. I go out to Oilwell Road on the other side of 29 all the time. I go down, there's a new set of wells they just drilled, just past the Transitional Airport. None of that is good. You know, the fact, if you ever want to see what fracking can do to a community that relies on its water, its well, watch Gasland 1 and Gasland 2. There are documentaries that were made in the Midwest where they've done fracking on many of these people's homes, and they open their faucet in their bathroom and/or their kitchen, they turn on the water, and use a lighter, and guess what? They have a flamethrower. I see the same thing here. I mean, it's, our, our geology here is perfect to just let that stuff dissolve right into our water supply. And I'm not talking about the materials they use for fracking. It's the natural gas that's released as part of the process. But I won't get too far into that. I had a question about the language employed here. Efforts to oppose extreme well stimulation. I don't get that word, stimulation. I mean, we're against oil, drilling oil wells out there. I'm not sure where the language came from, but it says here, you know, extreme well stimulation. Why are we just opposed to oil, uh, here?
And I hear what you're saying, Bob, but that's, that's the template that's been distributed to all the municipalities, that everybody has passed, and I don't know if there's been any changes. It's pretty much consistent with regards to the language. So, this is a template that was provided to us.
Well, somebody really smart, much smarter than me, started to thought through that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other public comment?
On this fracking, I had friends...
Close to the mic. You don't hear yet.
And, um, anyway, not only did they pass through Facebook and stand there and light their ponds that had become contaminated, and it just became just one big huge flame, but they lost their livestock. They couldn't drink the water. They were bringing water in from 50 miles. Most of them walked off of their land and, and just lost their land. I'm looking at, if they're going to frac, we sit on a coral rock shelf.
Biscuit, biscuit aquifer.
If they start fracking through that, we may be, what they predict in the future, we may become that more rapidly underwater, just gone. I, I know for a fact that when they dynamited for the rock bids, we bounced here, and they were dynamiting in Kendall on, on that trail. And we were bouncing here, and there are some real major cracks where people have their homes today and their property is sinking, and they can hear the rush underneath.